...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for attending our special joint meeting to discuss our master plan between Board Trustees and Planning Commission Graham and Township. So welcome. And we have our agenda. We're not going to be taking any actions, so I guess we probably don't need to have a who or an agenda, so just move right into it. With that, we have our Township Board members here. If you want to start, let's go around the table and just introduce ourselves, I think we've got some.
My name is Trustee Joe Lassie.
Planning Commission Vince Van Der Skie.
Planning Commission Ed Brown.
Planning Commission Dolores Coulter.
Erwuzak Township Treasurer.
Kathy Lane Township Clerk.
And Matt Wojewski with Giffords Webster.
Joe Vane and his office.
Robert Royal with Giffords Webster.
Clark Kent Township Attorney.
Ian Gelling as Planning Commissioner.
David Laddie Township Attorney.
Scott Bennett Graham Township Board.
Dennis Lehman City Township Superintendent.
And Mark Lloyd Planning Building Director.
Okay. I think that covers introductions. And now our presentation. Thank you for coming to our master plan basis.
Well, good. Unless there's something you want to start off with Dennis, then I'll just go ahead and kick it off with the... I'm going to do a quick presentation. What I want to do is just walk everybody through some general provisions of master planning, you know, what it is, how come we get to do them, and why we need to do them. So just get started with that. I'm just going to walk through this PowerPoint presentation. I can send it out if anybody wants additional copies. So what we're talking about tonight is our long-term master plan. It's typically a 20-year plan, and so you see, and I thought this was interesting when I typed in 2038, it kind of shocked me realizing, you know, how significant the work is that we need to do when we're planning out 20 years. So what I want to do is walk through the basics, what a master plan is, how come we have authority to do this, and why we do it. A master plan is a policy document intended to guide development in the community, implemented by the Township's zoning ordinance. Another way to describe it is that it's a blueprint for the physical development of the community. In other words, it sets a stage and identifies, you know, what generally speaking we'd like to see done in particular areas. The authority is granted by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Act 33 of 2008, Michigan Compiled Laws 1253805. Does in fact provide the authority for that. Local unit of government may adopt, amend, and implement a master plan as provided in this act. And that's part of the handout material that I sent to you. I do have additional copies of the entire public act if anybody's interested in more. Our number one student Ed, he does in fact have everything that was sent out in the copy, so if anybody needs to look over someone's shoulder, he has. In any event, now we want to talk a little bit about why we plan. And there's a lot of reasons, and everyone in this room can come up with your own. But generally speaking, from my perspective, it's to anticipate change, to identify what we want our community to look like and be like in 20 years. It helps to implement community vision. That's a huge part of a master plan, is obtaining and gaining community input on the process. And of course, to preserve the quality alike for the residents, businesses, and folks who might visit the town. A master plan describes what a community wants to look like, focuses on physical development, I mentioned that earlier, and it provides goals, objectives, and policies for how and what we're going to be doing. We will get into a couple other very... We're going to take a little deeper dive on how we're going to accomplish this here in a little bit. But more so, what is a master plan? What's in it? You have a land use plan, a transportation network plan, strategies for redevelopment, list of goals and objectives, as well as an implementation plan. And it's based on background information that we have, a collection of information that we don't have yet, but there's information out there that we need to collect, a study of the history of the community, mention public input earlier, comments and information from the public. That is probably one of the most important parts of this. That goes hand in hand with visioning, as well as the surveys work that we would do. So what does a master plan do? Well, it establishes a common community vision, it establishes goals and policies, and it assigns and provides an opportunity to track implementation. And I say that because even though, you know, a lot of past master plans haven't necessarily included a great deal in this area, in order to implement a master plan, in order to see it really come to fruition, and to have real success, frankly, to manage it, you have to assign and then track activities and things that are going on. And if you don't have a mechanism built into the plan, then you've got to come up with your own. And the problem with that is that many times communities just don't do that. So having it incorporated as part of the plan helps tremendously to identify who's responsible for what and when that needs to get done. And so that gives everybody the opportunity to know and understand what ought to be happening if it's not, and to help kind of push the items forward that are identified and that are considered to be important that the community wants to move forward. So what are the kinds of things that we would look at during the review of a master plan? Well, we look at housing opportunities, needs, if you will, the future land use plan itself. Of course, we'll take a look at zoning, zoning ordinance, and how we've done things, what build-out might look like. In other words, how would it look in the community if things were maxed out? What will we need from an infrastructure standpoint, technology and transportation? And we'll also be looking at the opportunities for land use change. What's happening where, and what might we need to do to the master plan to either accommodate or change what might be going on there if it's not in the best interest of the community? So what's the process? It's... One of them initially is to start off and identify stakeholders. Who's interested in this? Who is going to be interested? You've got businesses out there that would be interested, developers would be interested, property owners, everybody in this room would be interested, business owners, if I didn't mention that. And so the stakeholder list gets pretty extensive. Getting them involved is the important part and the challenging part. But in addition to that, part of the process involves inventorying and analyzing the assets that the community has. What do we have that is already in place that we don't need to concern ourselves with, or what do we have that's already in place that can help facilitate the things that we want to see happen in certain places? So we will identify those assets that are beneficial and those that are going to need to be put in place in order to see the things that we want to have done to come to fruition. We will in fact establish guiding principles associated with the plan, as well as develop a shared vision that gets incorporated into the plan and then hopefully implemented from that point forward. In addition to that, there's development focus areas that we would be looking at, areas clearly places like Tech Village and other areas that were interested in the northern part of the town, where there's concern about the appearance and activities up there, and what we might be able to do to turn some of that around. We need to develop action items and outcomes, anticipated outcomes that we might see or expect. Of course, we need to prepare the plan. And then we conduct a public hearing and we adopt the plan, and that's one thing that we'll work on. I've seen that over the last couple of plan adoptions. It's been adopted by just the Planning Commission in one instance, and then the Planning Commission and the Board in another instance. Just want to make sure between those times whether or not there was action taken by the Board to take that responsibility for being the body that approves the plan. I haven't found that resolution yet, but I'll look for it. If not, then otherwise it would just be the Planning Commission that would be responsible for approving that, but we'll take a look at that. And then as I was mentioning before with the implementation, we will monitor and measure the results. And that's an important part of what we're doing, because far too many times, master plans simply get created, and wonderful efforts, and great ideas and stuff, but they just kind of wait until the next required timeframe for either review or updating is. And we'd like that to be a little more active, a more active part of what we do. One of the things I'd like to think about doing in the future, and I'll work with the Planning Commission on this, is identifying those areas of the master plan that are met when we bring in projects to you, so that you can see that not only is this a great project in doing all these things, but it's doing these things to help implement the master plan. Just a piece of information that you might find interesting and helpful. And then the Board would also be able to track those accomplishments. At the end of the year, we do have reports, we'd be able to identify, not just the things that we've done from a physical development standpoint, but also those things we've done to implement the master plan itself. That way, we keep it active. And we put a good plan together, we ought to use it. So how are we going to do this? And this is where Dennis is going to come in, and we're going to do this as a team. This is an important part. We have had some dialogue about this, and this for us is a very exciting part, and I hope that you all get us excited. So we're going to have on this team, we'll have citizens participating, we'll have property owners, business owners, developers, investors, employees, of course. But who else is going to be on that team? And who else is going to be on that team is you. Everybody in this room, we hope, is going to truly take part and be a part of the team that needs to be assembled in order for this to be as effective and as quality of a master plan as it possibly can. So Dennis wants to talk to you a little bit about the team and get folks rallied up and excited.
Thanks, Mark. So it's kind of fun to have this opportunity to come up now for the master plan, because there's a lot of ways we can look at a master plan in our community. Why do we have it? Well, because we have to, right? The law says we're required to have a master plan, so we can have one. We can have a very thin master plan that we dust off every five years, update a couple things, throw it back on the shelf, and never think about it again. And we'll satisfy what the law requires of us. But that's not what a master plan is really for. It's about talking about what you guys can do as a group of elected and appointed individuals who give a considerable amount of your time back to your community. You have the opportunity to shape that vision. And that's the coolest thing for me is a master plan. You can look at communities who have really gotten it right, and you can look at communities who have really gotten it wrong. But this is the opportunity where you get as many people involved as possible. Everybody here lives in a neighborhood. Reach out and do some outreach in your neighborhood. Are they represented? Have they come to a meeting? Because we're going to hold a series of meetings, and we're going to ask stakeholders to get engaged from all over the community, come in. So that... And I'll tell you a very true story. When I first got here, for the first few months, I had a conversation with somebody who owns property, who at one time wanted to do something, was turned down by the Planning Commission on a straight-up rezoning. And we got into a conversation about master plan communities, and he said, "Master plans are only used for the township so they can stop people from doing what they want with their property," right? That's his vision of what a master plan is. But a master plan is our shared vision. It's about what you guys, when you go out and talk to stakeholders, I can master plan a community, I can tell you exactly how I'd like this thing to be built out, but that may or may not meet the needs of all the other individuals. It has to be a collective group consciousness where we come together and we talk about, "What do you want to see? What do you want to see 20 years out from now?" And you have a great opportunity to get it right if you do it right. So it's a living, breathing, active document. So we have to hold meetings. And so are we just going to have like a couple of prescribed meetings here in the auditorium? That wouldn't be my recommendation. It would be that we look all over. We do them out at, you know, Captain's Club out at Woodfield, and we look for maybe a church that has a great auditorium that allows. We do it in different areas around. And we have... Not everybody has to show up for every meeting. You have a few people who will champion that meeting and go in there. We'll put together meeting materials so you can go in there and pop up the boards and talk about future land use, and what do you want to see, and how do you feel about the community, and how are we doing on residential? Is the commercial growth where it should be? What are we doing from a recreational aspect? Do we have... Are we meeting the needs of what the community's asking us for? It's about asking people, "What do you want to see?" And then helping create that vision. So the only way we can do that and really have gotten engaged is by a series of meetings all across the township. And you look for people who will come and champion that cause, bring their neighbors, try to find somebody from their unique subdivision about, "Hey, bring some representatives from your subdivision. You live in Williamsburg Farms, right? Can you bring a few people, bring a few neighbors, because we're having a meeting. We'd love to hear what they think about the future of the community." It's the coolest thing when you can really talk about, "Well, yeah, we do want to see some commercial development down here, but man, we really want to protect the great residential neighborhoods that we have here." Those are the things that you do, and those are the things that you get to put your stamp on. And when you get the master plan right, and you've gotten all that community engagement in there, because we held the meetings like we said we were going to, you don't have people saying, "Well, you know, it's not the way I wanted it." We get to challenge them back. Well, it's the way the majority of people told us. This wasn't the Township Boards, it wasn't the Planning Commission's master plan, it wasn't the consultant's master plan. Because I guarantee you, these guys can write you guys an incredible master plan. But you also have to think of this as an investment. This master plan is going to... You'll see the proposal, but you're talking about spending $80,000 and then holding some meetings in staff time. It's a considerable investment to do a master plan. If you want to do a master plan for $10,000, we can probably do that. But you're going to get what you pay for there. You're going to have a document that we should throw back on the shelf and not look at anymore, because that's what it will be worth. This is about really holding those meetings and engaging people and challenging them, and challenging ourselves. Put things up on the board, ask people, "What are we getting right? What are we getting wrong?" When you drive through the community, where do you look at and think, "Why did they do that?" Share that with us, because those are the things you want to talk about, and you start looking forward in that vision and saying, "You know, maybe we should have done this better." A lot of them, classic examples, a lot of times when you drive around, you think, "Man, I don't know why they did all that development there without a feeder road. A feeder road would have made so much sense." Well, because they didn't have that conversation 20 years before, they just started building it. And then 20 years later, they're like, "Oh, rats, I wish we would have put a feeder road in here because of all this commercial development." This is our shot to get it right. So it's a big investment. It costs a lot of dollars to make this investment. And if our vision collectively is that we just want a master plan to stick back on the shelf and never look at again, then ignore Ron and Jill's proposal, and don't spend that money, because I'll spend it on something else that, you know, I'll fix it. I'll put some pot hole patches in, and it'll probably get me more bang for my buck right now in the short term. But if you're really serious about putting your stamp on what the community will look like 20 years from now, then listen to the proposal, because that's what it's about. It's about listening to your planning commissioners. These guys deal with it every day. They have people standing in front of them, developers standing in front of them, saying, "I want to do this." And a lot of times, they have to say, "Yeah, you're not going to do that there." But that's okay, because it's how you shape your community. It's how you protect your environment that we all live in. And it really is, it's the stakeholders. We have to be excited. We have to let people know we're excited. You're going to have meetings and nobody's going to come. It'll be one person or two persons. Then get the comments from those two people, because now they just got the chance to shape the vision of their community for 20 years, and that's cool. So you're going to get called on to be willing to take a meeting kit and hold a meeting, and take a couple planning commissioners and a couple Board members and a couple staff members, and hold the meeting, and really engage people and ask them, "What is it you want to see? What do you want to do? How are we doing right now?" You'll be holding maps up. "Are we getting it right? Are we getting it wrong?" And listen to folks and gather all this information, because that's what they're going to base the master plan on. And then 20 years from now, when people say, "Well, this is a really nicely planned community," because I can give you some examples off the top of my head, when I go through communities and think, "Well, this is a really nicely planned community," and I can give you some examples when I drive through a community and go, "Man, they have a master plan that sits on a shelf." It's just, it's that obvious. That's engaging. So we're going to start rolling these out as we go. You'll hear the proposal. Right now, I almost put it on for the Board to consider, but I want them time to consider this. After this meeting tonight, you're going to hear a proposal from Giffords Webster about helping us create this magnificent document, right? And then we're going to take that, and it's going to come to the Board in April. And you're going to be asked to spend some money. You're going to be asked to authorize that proposal or make a decision one way or the other. Again, I'm giving you options. One's going to be pricey, but well worth it. One's going to be, you know, it depends on your vision and where you want to go. I hope we invest in it, and I think when we do, if the Board supports it, then we're really going to start breaking out about, okay, who, what, how many meetings you want to hold? Four? Twelve? Sixteen? And we're going to say, "Who's willing to champion? What kind of materials do we want to have? Obviously, we're going to have zoning maps, we're going to have other things. But we need to ask people questions about recreational pursuits. Are we getting it right? What do you need more of? What do you use now? Have you been to our parks? What do you go to other places and do? Why do you go there? What do you do when you're in those communities? Hmm. It's about what we can do, and those are the conversations. We're going to capture it. You'll have whiteboards everywhere. You'll allow people to do sticky notes and slap them up and say, "This is what I'm all about." And you'll keep bringing that information back, and we'll compile it, and we'll compile it. It won't be a two-month process. It'll take us a year to get through this. But I'm telling you, I love the master plan. I think you should, every time you get involved with a community, you should grab that master plan, you should carry it with you. We call it eat the master plan. Whenever you have breakfast, just sit there and read it, because, you know, it gives you something to do and you get to feel it.
Dennis, yeah, I agree with what you're saying, that it also starts with planning commissioners and the trustees that also want to see this to be a premier community. And if so, they've got to also step up, and I say all, talking about planning commissioners and trustees, and share what that vision is, what they think it should be. Because yes, I think it's critical to get input from the community, but we also really have to buy into this thing as well and have a vision of our own.
Ed, I think it's a great point, because every single person sitting at this table decided voluntarily to get involved to make their community a better place. Nobody's here doing it for the money. Everybody did it because they want to have an active role in their community. And that's it. Is your vision the same as Scott's? I don't know. Should it be? I think that you can find that there'll be differences, but I think in the end, the things that matter are what will come together out of consensus. So that's kind of our vision of how we're going to roll it out. And then we want meetings. Like I said, is your church got an auditorium that would give you some time to sponsor a meeting for an hour and a half? Are you involved with a civic organization that would be interested, that would, you know, be interested in getting some community input? I mean, those are the kind of things we're going to ask you for. And we're going to say, "Well, you guys champion the meeting at that organization." And then, how many of us do you want there to support you? What kind of materials can we bring? We'll learn as we go. We'll say, "Well, you know, we need more of this, we need less of this. Hey, you know what would be really great? If we had a bigger map of certain areas." And we can produce all of that here. All you guys got to do is ask. We'll produce it, we'll put it on boards. And we want that kit, so everybody's like, "Hey, you're going to a meeting? Great. Here's the information. Take it with you." And I think it can be really amazing.
I think so, too. I think, you know, our foray into social media, both the township and then individually, we've seen that the public has plenty of input that they're willing to give on what types of things they would like to see here in the township, even the specific names of which restaurants and stores they would like to see located in the township. Unfortunately, we don't have, you know, the ability to force individual businesses here, but we surely could. I think the roadshow or, you know, the listening sessions that we have around the township, I think will get very good participation if people that, you know, speak out on social media anyways, half of them show up. But I agree. I think, you know, I've talked with a number of business people over the past two years that, you know, about having roundtables and discussing. I think our... The other thing that Mr. Lehman and Mr. Lloyd are working on is a program to help development come here. And I think, you know, we might be able to even tie in some of that with some of the business roundtable and get input on that as well. But I'm excited about it, and I think our Board will support doing this. I think that's how we're going to leave our legacy too, as a planning commission and as a Board. I mean, when you look back on what we've created here over the last 10 years, or what we want to be able to look back on, there's going to be things that we were responsible for planning and setting in motion. And I guess a lot of it probably is we're planting seeds that maybe we'll never see, you know, the tree, but we're going to see, you know, the thing take root maybe, and that will give a great feeling of satisfaction to all of us, I think, for having started that.
We did a chamber breakfast earlier this month, and I, in my conversation at the Chamber of Breakfast, I challenged everybody, told them about the master plan update coming up, told them we're going to have a series of meetings around. And I said, "I just want you guys to remember this conversation, this intimate conversation between me and you, is that if you come to us 10 years from now, five years from now, and you say, 'Hey, I want to build this here,' and we say no, just remember, we gave you the opportunity to come and have a conversation with us, and you chose not to. So if you end up going somewhere down the road and finding out that, 'Man, I'd really like to be able to put this development here,' and you find out that the community has said no, you had a chance to participate. You had a chance to sway that." And as I was walking back to the crowd, I had a business owner, I'm going to show her my nameless, stop and say, "Do you have a schedule for the meetings?" So I was like, "Yes, you know, at least one," you know. And I said, "As soon as we have it, we'll have it published, we'll have it everywhere. We'll, you know, we'll pass it out at the Chamber of Breakfast. We'll do whatever that we can do."
So you're for this, huh?
Well, I'm kind of looking forward. I can take or leave it.
I think it gives us a chance to let people know a little bit about the process for how things happen, too, that we don't just say, "Hey, we want to stick, you know, this type of business here, and, you know, oh, no, we can't." I don't know. I think, you know, there's a process to educating people. And we can't force a particular type of business or a particular brand of business to locate in this specific spot. But I think it gives us an opportunity to educate the public on how some of the zoning works. You know, we aren't going to be able to give them zoning one-on-one, because it certainly helps start the process maybe a little bit.
So when you think of Graham Lang, what do you think of... Ed, you said a great thing. Premier, right? We want to be a premier community.
A destination.
Yeah.
We try and want people to follow the restaurant. I did hear it all the time. We've got to get to a point where those restaurants think they can't afford not to be here.
Right. I think we've talked about some things, I'm sure, that we'll eventually share, that we're looking at doing that maybe incentivize some of them, or at least create less hurdles for them. Dennis and Mark have been working on that fast and furiously.
And with that? And with that, let's have Ron and Jill talk to us.
I'm just going to kick it off, and then Jill's going to go through some of the details.
Excuse me. Sure. One question I have, and that's, this is the first time I've heard 20 years. Every time I've heard discussion in our meetings, it's always been 10 years, 10 years, 10 years. And is there a reason why we haven't focused on 20 years?
I can answer that. I think you can look at the horizon you choose to be most appropriate. And sometimes, some communities like to look at the 10-year horizon, because they feel like that's about as far out as they want to look. Some will look out 20, some will look out 40. So there isn't... I would say 20 is pretty common, but some also focus on 10. So there's no absolute magic answer. It's really what you want to do, because you have to revisit it every five years anyway. So it's terms of what you're comfortable in.
To hear 20, as compared to we've always... And I agree, you know, 10 years, even five years ahead is tough. It's a big struggle. Big time with that, but nonetheless. Okay, I just want to get clarity there. Thanks.
And speaking of that time range, it was about 15 years ago that I first started working with the Township. So I was honored to be a part of that master plan update back in 2003, 2004, recently. And there's still, there's some familiar faces that were involved back then from the Planning Commission and Township Board that were here. And that comprehensive review and comprehensive update provided a lot of opportunity for a really deep evaluation of what the community wanted to be. And we spent a lot of times talking about premier community. That was one of the themes. And I'm very excited. When I hear all of you talk about involvement of all of the stakeholders in this community, that's music to our ears, because when there's buy-in and involvement from all those stakeholders, then it becomes a plan you believe in, just like Dennis mentioned. It's something you're going to refer to all the time. You want it to be that document that guides your decisions. And if you have that buy-in through the process, you have that participation, you hear all those ideas, and you can think about those and evaluate them, and ultimately come up with a plan that makes sense for the community, then you have that strength, you have that to fall back upon. And it really is, it's your bible, it's your resource. It's what you go to when you're looking for a land use-related answer. You can look to that as a guide to make that decision. So we're very excited to be here and to continue that work. And Jill's going to kind of walk you through a little bit of...
Sure. To Mr. Laddie, does a 10-year versus a 20-year master plan strengthen or weaken or no change whatsoever on zoning, you know, defense of zoning requests?
I don't think it changes. I don't think it changes it. It doesn't weaken it. I think that what we... And we've done this in the past. I think what we've done is we have sections of our plan that look out into areas and project potential use as well in the future. And then we've always, but they're always essentially connected to our underlying zoning. So I don't see that that's a problem. And I, one of the things we want to do sort of is to make sure that we've, even though we're looking forward farther into the future, we want to make sure that we're not causing ourselves intermediate or problems with our implementation of our ordinance. It's not going to be a problem. We did it last time.
Sure.
Yeah, those are really good questions. This is a really exciting opportunity for all of you to be involved and to help educate each other and the community. In terms, I just wanted to like reiterate a couple of things. One is the involvement, and that was something the Planning Commission talked about when we started talking about what this scope of work is going to look like for this next master plan, and the importance of trying to reach out and reach people where they are instead of asking them to come here. So it's exciting to hear that you're going to be putting some of those resources together to be able to help implement that. And we're happy to help you prepare those materials and help, you know, interpret for the rest of the, to help inform the rest of the planning process. The other thing that's really helpful when we were talking about involving so many The other thing that's really helpful, when we were talking about involving so many people and educating the community, is about the implementation. And it kind of goes to the 10, 20-year question. It's, it's really about creating and cultivating this culture of implementation through, as we move into the future. I worked in a community where in 1996, they did a 20-year master plan. And they said, they called it the 2016 Plan. And on my first day on the job, they had just adopted it, and they said, here, this is what you're going to be doing. And I was there for five years. We did it while I was there. After I left, they continued. They had some, they had some bumps in the road, though. It wasn't always easy. The community reacted to the change, as people do. It's just what we do. We don't, as a group of us, often like changes. But that, that leadership in planning was really strong, and they got back on track, and, and they are moving forward. So it's, it takes that collective vision, that dedication to a plan, that commitment to it, and that has helped by having more people involved in the process. So I think this is really going to be an exciting project to go through. Do you want me to go through the?
The slides?
The actual, yeah, do you all have this, or no? No.
I have.
You want to make them over there?
These are pages, yeah, so you might need to move it up and down.
So I just want to walk you through. It won't take me too long, because I know we've got another meeting coming up here.
There you go.
Cool. All right.
This'll allow you to collect, you know, page by page, and I just don't know if it's going to center it, you know what I mean?
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, that's fine. All right. So a couple of things that we were talking about with the planning commission, the objectives that we, as a planning commission, that you all talked about, were to, first of all, encourage public participation. We're going to use a variety of engagement tools, not just going to people, meeting with them face-to-face. But again, to your point, using social media to try and get people involved. Trying to provide a variety of methods that can reach people wherever they are. We wanted to explore key planning topics. These are things that the planning commission talked about. Housing, land use, community health, and what it means to be age-friendly. We know the community is aging, as are so many of our communities. How do we prepare for that? How do we prepare for the kind of housing that people want, the transportation that people may need, and how do we make land uses easier to access by people regardless of how they're going to get there? And then provide actionable strategies for advancing the master plan goals and objectives. I know that, that in our previous master plan, we've had the implementation chapters. And we've had, we went through, the last time we did this, we had our exercise where we prioritized items to be, for implementation, and we got kind of stuck because we ran out of resources to be able to do all those things. That's another reason why having more people involved in the process helps spur that along. It helps when someone comes to you and says, yeah, what are we going to do about the Saginaw Corridor? When are we going to get onto that? It's something that we talked about before.
I'll make a little judgment for you.
So to start off with, we would do some visioning exercises. So we would have, we would help hold another joint meeting with you all. And we'd like to include staff in this as well, because your professional staff here at the township has a lot of expertise in their areas, and they may be aware of trends that are coming down the road that, that you need to be aware of. And they offer a lot of really good insights, and they talk to people on a daily basis for the most part, too. We'll prepare a short background briefing for you before. It's like a little bit of a resource pack. It may hit some of the highlights, some of our recent articles, some current trends, things that other communities are doing in other parts of the country, just to give you sort of a big picture idea of planning, certain planning topics, and have that be just a resource for you. And then we would have our joint meeting where we talk about findings from, oh, we're going to do a survey as well. So that gives you an opportunity to just provide your direct input, sort of in a semi-anonymous fashion, and then come together and share those things in more detail and meet with all of us. And that would result in some guiding themes, I think, and help set the stage. And during those things, you'll be thinking of what you want to find out from the community. So when we have those, those committee, or community meetings, we can focus on the things that you think are important to really find out about. So for public engagement, again, we're going to use a variety of approaches. We will do an online survey, because people just like that. It's easy. They can do it in the privacy of their own home, takes them 15 minutes, and they're done. And we get some good information from that, too. We have another newer platform that we've been using for some of our communities. It's an online platform, and it's called Picture This. And it's kind of a cool way to have a picture say a little bit more than what people can maybe verbalize in writing sometimes. So you can ask people to take a picture with their phone and upload it to it, and it goes right into a map. And so people can say, you know what I like about this community? I like this big banner right here that goes over the roadway. I like this particular shop. This is my favorite restaurant. I love Bicentennial Park. I love this pavilion. I love the light, like whatever it is that they like. They can stick it, they can put it on the map, and you can see. And then they can also likewise put things like, why is the street full of huggles? I don't like this. This needs help. We work on this area. So it gets you some different kinds of feedback. Community kiosks or posters, we put those all throughout the township that would give people information about how they can be involved, what the master plan process is, and where they can get more information, and put that in, in here, Park Recreation Office, Library, restaurants throughout town, and different places like that. And then the open houses, we would have, like we've done in the past, where we have the different stations, where we invite people to participate based on topics. We would expect you all to be there and help facilitate those conversations as well. They're nice because they give you a little bit more time to have some dialogue with folks. And then again, some of the additional meetings that you're talking about doing throughout the community, I think would be just an incredible way to collect more information. This is an example of the Picture This. This is in Rochester Hills. So you can see, so these little dots represent a picture on the map, and people put in the picture, and then they just have a little blurb about what they like about it. And then other people are able to see that and get an idea of what the community is thinking. There's the open houses and posters. And then this just goes through the work program. And I don't know how much information we want to go through, I don't know how much more time we want to spend on that.
This would be a good time to go through.
What's that? Okay. Initially, we would just have a kickoff meeting with the planning commission. We would define the milestones, the benchmarks. If we can do this with staff ahead of time, and be able to come up with the dates then that we're targeting for these different meetings, the open house, and things like that. And then we'd be collecting data, collection and inventory, looking at demographics, land use, and any of the other factors in the community that we need to be able to understand more clearly. We have our partners at the Chesapeake Group. We did update some market information in the 2016 Tech Village conceptual plan, and so we can update that, just so that we understand what's happening from a local and a regional and a national basis for the economy. We'll look at the Housing and Neighborhood Plan. This is something that we haven't done since 2004, really looking at housing types you have in the community, ownership, occupancy, understand how the housing market impacts and is impacted by land use. And that, again, will be something that comes up as we talk about the community aging more. What do people want? Maybe people want to age in place, and they want to live in their house as long as possible. Others will be happy to age in community. They don't want to leave here because this is where they go to church, or they go to places of worship, or they go to the grocery store, they get their hair done. They have their friends here, their doctors are here. They want to stay here, but maybe they don't want to live in the same big house that they have. So how do we provide for that elsewhere in the community, to really understand that? And look at some new housing concepts that are being thrown, tossed out and utilized in other communities, and how that might be something that was, be worth exploring here in this community as well. The redevelopment strategies, we've talked about identifying and prioritizing three redevelopment sites and coming up with concepts for redevelopment there. So these would be things that we would ask the community about during the input process. Are there sites in the community that are underutilized, or lightly even? And how can we plan for a new future for those things and redevelop that? And encourage redevelopment by showing developers what we intend, like we did with Tech Village. And then the plant operation, helping work with planning commission to develop goals and objectives, preparing a future land use map, and coming up with the master plan strategies for those different areas. And again, implementation, Mark touched on this earlier too, that the update should be a living document. We want to leave you with a master plan document that you can start implementing. And that would include the executive summary table, zoning plan. And just to touch on that really quickly, just to, I always like to have, whenever I have the opportunity to talk about the difference between a future land use map and a zoning map, I like to. Because the future land use map is the guide for the future. It talks about our long-range vision, but the zoning map is the one that actually is the legal framework for guiding development. And so they're, they work hand-in-hand together, but they're different things. And when we see something on the future land use map that's different than what's currently there, the master plan should explain if rezoning is necessary and when that might happen. So it doesn't necessarily mean that it would be rezoned tomorrow, and sometimes that's a concern that the community has. But it would provide information on when that rezoning might be appropriate. And that will help with subpublic hearing and adoption, and prepare a final plan and poster for other documents that help summarize that for the community, so that there's something that's concise and easy to understand. So that is as quickly as I can get through. But what kind of questions do you have for us?
So, sorry about the question. I noticed that you called out specific tasks around housing, neighborhoods, and redevelopment. And one of the focuses that we're trying to do here is really trying to build the kind of business and commercial. So would it be possible to push a task in there to help us, you know, get some more focus on that as well?
When you say focus on business and commercial, what do you mean?
So a number of the strategic initiatives the board is working on are attractive.
Oh, yeah.
Businesses, retail, restaurants, those kind of things. As well as the whole idea of, so that's quite a ton of amenities there, right?
Right, right.
So then there's the other leg of this thing, which is places to work. So trying to develop nice places like there, aspects of Tech Village, right, to create attractive places to, you know, towns and work. So just trying to see if we can add some kind of task around those areas.
Yeah.
Well, in, there's, in fact, I'll say a couple of things. One, we're going to have the redevelopment area studies, which is business-focused. Typically, we're looking at areas that you consider to be priorities within the community, and we're going to try to deep dive into those and come up with a more detailed vision of what those areas would be. And then also, within the overall land use plan chapter, we also address what we were just talking about, that type of focus. So I think it's actually built in there. It just, it's in the redevelopment and it's in the land use plan area. But the types of elements you're referring to are exactly the types of things that we want to see reflected in the plan as well.
Just like.
I would simply like to know, some of the materials I gave Superintendent Limana and Supervisor Bennett, if you looked them over for Vision 2020, because that encompassed back in 2000 the types and the process that you're talking about now. And with their vision of 2020 being so close, it would be interesting with, because they had hundreds of people involved in different locations, you know, the union halls, the schools. So it just, for me to show how the past worked hard to get us where we are, to see how much they were able to plan for 2020.
I think that would be really interesting, because it would give you the opportunity to see, well, what, what did we realize from that vision 20 years ago? And, and how did we do it? And what did we, what did we miss? Or what did we, what did we envision that we weren't able to, to see come to pass, and why?
Well, it was more of a community involvement by some of the community leaders rather than being a master plan. But their knowledge and their expertise as businessmen made it really go along. And I'm sorry, most people here don't even know about it, so.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we, hopefully we still, I'm copying, it's been a while. But I'm sure we can find one if we need to. Yeah, we can, we certainly can, if that passed over.
One of the things, and Spain, you mentioned was the ability to take pictures. Is there an ability to upload pictures of places that you would like, you know, that you like in other communities?
Yes, actually there is.
And say, hey, this would be an ideal type of development that I liked in Rochester Hills or Rochester that I'd love to see here around town.
Yeah, you can do that.
And hope people do that.
Anybody else have any input? So we'll wrap this up.
Aren't we recording this every quarter, in the meeting with the group?
No, I think we do it twice a year, twice a year.
So I have a question.
We can meet again.
Yeah, so the last page of the documentation here has the timeline.
Yes.
And that's kind of one of the things that we're interested in, because maybe you could flip ahead to it. So there's a long streak here, which is really good, where we have basically that long green line as public engagement. So there's one open house scheduled in month five, or June five, or October to get this done. Is, is there other opportunities for, for public interaction in the open house, or how does that work?
That's a great question. Anytime we have a planning commission meeting, those are always open to the public, and folks are encouraged to come. And anytime that's on the agenda, the planning commission would welcome people to attend and participate in those conversations. And so we'll make, we'll make sure that people know about that. Absolutely, yeah. And that's one of the things that I mentioned, I touched on it briefly, to meet with staff and define those dates as much as we can upfront, so that we can just blast it out and repeat it and constantly talk about it. And that's one of the interesting things that I think we find, is we all get so aware of what we're doing. And we get into the process, we're halfway through, and somebody comes up and they're like, what? What's a master plan? What are you, what are you doing? What is this all about? I had never heard about this. And as many, as people as you think you've reached, you haven't reached them all. And so we keep reiterating it and talking about it at every opportunity that we have, and let people know how to participate, and let them know where the links to a survey are, where the directions are to the meeting, when is the meeting, what kind is the meeting at? And it's going to involve each of you inviting people personally and saying, I have, I would like to invite you to come to this open house, because I think there's some information that you have that I'd like you to share with the community. And that goes a long way. People will hear about a meeting and be like, well, yeah, maybe I'll go. But if that says to me, I really want you to come to this, I think you'd find it really interesting. And he says, I'm going to be there, then I'm probably going to go.
And then in addition to what you described, there's also the smaller group meetings that are going to be being held. Dennis and Mark referred to those. They're going on during this process as well. So there's going to be multiple opportunities for community input to this process.
Got a question. Now, one of the components of developing a website, how soon do you see that going online?
As soon as we get started.
Yeah, well, I think, that's what I, I think that should be a priority, because then we can find the people.
Oh, absolutely.
So, yeah, we can try to, oh, man, what we're doing on the site here, you know, following this website, you know.
Exactly. And then we can also put up, as we get information and share it with you, that goes up on the website too, so that folks are, if they miss a meeting, they can go back and see what was talked about.
And when we, when we talk about everybody here being involved, that is one of the keys. And one of the things that we've talked about, and got pretty excited about realizing that, you know, the involvement that these both, these bodies, commission as well as the board have shown, you know, as long as that enthusiasm continues and the efforts made on your parts, frankly, to some extent, that part of what we want to try to accomplish with regards to public outreach and information is going to be critical. So Dennis's comments about you being involved and being true participants and kind of, you know, taking a roadshow on, that's a big deal. That doesn't happen a lot. So when you talk about a premier community, it don't happen unless you make a real effort to get there. And that's one of the things we're trying to emphasize is, in order for this to be as successful as it can be, your personal involvement is going to be critical to its success. And, you know, that means you're going to be responsible for certain things. Don't think for a minute that you're going to be left out there to dry. You're going to be given the kind of information and the kind of, even a sort of script, if you will, to some extent, to be able to go through. Because when you're done with the meeting, we're going to want a full information that you've obtained. you've obtained from that meeting. So we're going to give you a toolkit, if you will, to take with you, and we're going to be there, too, but to go with you and to bring back that information and have it become a part of the results of this effort. That's going to be a big part of this.
One thing we need to work on, and that's building trust, because on the Planning Commission, I think the people out there don't trust us very much. And I liken that to the Speedway gas stations. You know, we come, we talk, we give you our input, and you guys go do your thing anyway. And, you know, Dan has tried many times to explain, if they satisfy the ordinances, we have to allow that. But they think...
I think you mentioned it's educating, what we can do and what we can't do. We're just not judge and jury here. We have to follow...
Right. But right now, I think our credibility is pretty low as a Planning Commission, as evidenced by when we have a public hearing, you know, we have zero to maybe two or three people come.
That shows they do trust you. Yeah, that's where they're all at. And I think that's a really good example, and I don't think that's because, I think, remember, at the same time, you had the other, you had the flipwater crisis going on at the same time. And that, when I think of the thing that kind of got everybody freaked out about what's going on at City Hall, at Township Hall, because we see this in a lot of communities as well, not just here. Getting out there and talking to people about, "What do I do as a Planning Commissioner?" Well, I'll tell you, this is what we do. Maybe that would get more people interested and involved, and I'm sure if I talked to you, they would not have any reason to doubt.
I think, you know, we used as an opportunity to briefly educate people on, you know, this is why we set up zoning, this is why we have ordinances. And now, once we set these, guess what? Hey, where can you put gas stations? I want, you know, well, you know, these areas would be decided for that, that yes, we could put it in there, you know? And that's why we're having these meetings to decide, you know, what do we see the vision going in this area of the township? And I think it's a good opportunity to build credibility, and, I mean, we do it with cookies with the cop, right, to our chief, and this is going to be our cookies with the cop for the Planning Commission. But this is your opportunity to come and meet with the Planning Commission and, you know... We're also recording, we started recording the Planning Commission meetings now, and those are also getting put up on our website and on YouTube. We're transparent, like, take a look at us, see, this is what we're doing. We're acting, you know, right out in the wide open public, so you can see us. And I think we have to encourage people, by all means, if you're curious, and you can't get to a meeting, jump on and watch what we do on our YouTube channel, or you can hit the videos right off our website. You can see what it is that we take care of, because it is a lot of, it's a lack of education, like Dan said, you know, it's folks who say, "Oh, you guys don't listen to us anyway." And I've heard it in those gas station ones especially, "You guys don't listen to us anyway." You're like, "Yeah, but there's laws that we have to follow." And so we're doing that, you know?
Well, one of the things that I can talk about is those Speedway station at Ollie Drive. They, Kevin LaValle and the people from Speedway, when they met with us, they were very willing to do it, and we resolved and made suggestions, and they removed some of the things and said, "Oh, we never thought about it." But that interaction helped the Ollie Drive Speedway and what the neighbors that bought that property wanted to work out. And so with that particular location, there's not going to be a problem, it's just a matter of...
I don't think we're looking at any specifics, we're just saying overall, that we need to make sure that we show the transparency on a cell phone tower or anything, that we show that we're following rules, we aren't just doing it based on...
And the other thing, just to follow up on that, is to, is when we share with the community, "Well, you know what we need? There are things that we need in the community that might not be as desirable to have in your backyard, maybe the gas stations, maybe the cell towers. So what kinds of things can we do to help mitigate that impact? Does more screening help? Should it be across the street? Should we have walls? What kind of design standards should we be thinking about?" So we can address, you know, it might not be the best thing, but it's got to go someplace. So how do we kind of work with that? And we'll know that's what is part of this process also.
And the process, I wouldn't say the process itself, but the involvement that folks who do, in fact, get involved, I think, and I really love the comment you made about building trust, that really resonates with me, because I do believe that that's important. But I think this process has the ability to build trust, and I think that just needs to be one of the things that we're conscious of, conscientious of when we're moving forward with doing these surveys and presentations and open houses, is to make sure that folks are made aware of the fact that, you know, we're looking for their information. We want that input, and we provide a lot of different ways to make that happen. And when they get involved and when they become part of it, I think that in itself should help lend itself to building some trust.
We've got lots of great discussion here, and I think it's a great meeting. We've got a Township Board meeting we have to start in a few moments. And what we need to do is figure out our next date. We're looking at September, and I don't know, this is the fourth Tuesday that we're going to do them on the...
Fourth Tuesday of September?
But we could do them...
And must we have one soon?
I was going to say...
The Master Plan...
But, you know, we've been on a six-month, we'd be around a three-month schedule for...
Well, if we're going to get behind this project, that's what my question to Monty is, if we're really going to get behind this, if we're really going to implement this...
We have to do it every day. We'll get a date in June on the fourth Tuesday.
At least every day.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.